Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be aware that the proceedings are being videotaped. Please put in the record that we met in executive session on a personnel matter. First up on the agenda is a presentation from the Wissahican Volunteer Fire Company.
Yes, sir.
Chief, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
For those who don't know me, I'm Jay LeBeard, Fire Chief of Wissahican Fire Company. We're going to ask tonight, President of the Fire Company and Fire Marshal.
If you guys could please use the microphone so that people online can hear you. It's on already, so just pick it up and talk it. No, pick it up and talk into it, but it's on.
Okay, there you go.
We would like to make a presentation tonight to Mr. Mark Ray, Mr. Ed Brant, from the officers and members of the Wissahican Fire Company, to say thank you for your extended township service to the members of this community and especially to the fire company and all the emergency services meetings that I've attended for the last seven years, but I know you guys have attended a lot more than I have. So we have a token of our appreciation. Do you want to present that to Mr. Gray?
Oh, he come down and he can take a picture. Someone's got a camera out there.
This will be to keep you warm on the nights when you don't have these meetings to come to.
Way better if you do a flag.
Yeah, the blanket is, are you trying to double the tape? That's yours?
Sure.
All right.
This is a super sweater event, but I think we're all right.
Yeah.
Now, that's one statement.
Oh, okay. You still prefer the monitor of the steamer with the hook up the horse. Like I say, we're still amused. So great.
All right, now we are. I hold this up, so we can see this. All right.
Thank you, man.
Appreciate it.
Al, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're both veterans of the EMS committee as.
As Jay said, we appreciate the time you put in that, and I think also the support that the township has given the fire companies. And that, yes, speaking as fire marshals for both fire companies, the support that's been given is much appreciated. So thanks again, and be safe. And be safe. And good luck on the rest, on the next part of your journey.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're not going to get away from us that easy, Al. I think we're going to come back and haunt you.
We're always, we're always looking for bugs.
I'll get my air pack as soon as Ed gets his.
You don't, you don't inside burning buildings.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Chief? Chief, before, before you go, I just want to let you know that you may want to get the final minutes of this meeting because I'm going to suggest.
I saw that, sir. I spoke earlier to township manager.
Great.
And I would give that information to him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Good night.
Right.
Just add it to another list of things I have to do.
All right, we know you can handle it. All right, all right. Next up, receipt of Board Supervisors' Minutes from November the 23rd. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Receipt of invoice history, is this ready, Mr. Manager?
Yes, this is for October 2021, on our 76,607 dollar and $62,000.
Okay, are any questions from members of the board? No? Okay. Any questions from members of the public? No? Okay, can I have a motion?
Some move.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Year-to-date budget report and balance sheet, are we good with that, Mr. Manager? Probably not, right?
Finance Director's here.
Oh, Mr. Finance Director, Chuck, how are you? Good. Are we good with the year-to-date budget report and balance sheet?
I think so.
Okay, could you give us? You're going to need the microphone, yeah?
For the first 10 months of the year, revenues exceed expenditures by $626,605. That compares to last year, $623,567. Very close, within a couple thousand dollars. Items are essentially within budget. There's three revenue categories where we're exceeding budget already, and they are real estate tax transfer revenue, where we exceed budget by 164; land development zoning fees and permits, where we exceed by 121%; and and permits, where we exceed by 102%, 102% of budget. The only negative is still remains in the snow removal category from last winter, where we're over budget by $6,200.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the public? Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next up is the approval for the 2022 budget and fiscal plan. Mr. Manager, we, how are we looking?
We're looking good. The budget line out after the November meeting.
I think we need two of them.
Yeah, I think we considered not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that is in the budget, actually. We have revenues of $19,932,409 and expenses at $20,942,632. We will use some fund balance to balance the budget for 2022. There is no tax increase. And in front of you is a resolution, two resolutions, 2021-24, showing the revenues and expenditures, as I just said, and Resolution 2021-25, showing the millage, which will remain the same at 1.223 mills for the township for 2022. So no tax increase, and we will be using some fund balance to, to balance the budget for 2022. Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the supervisors about the budget and fiscal plan? Any questions from members of the audience? Anybody online? Jamie?
There are no questions online.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, so we have, we need a budget resolution. So everybody has the information. Are there any questions here from the board? Now, any questions to the public? Can I have a motion?
Talking about the tax resolution or the budget?
Budget resolution. Resolution 24. Any questions from the audience? Public? No? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're doing the tax resolution. Any questions? Any members of the audience have any questions? No. Okay, can I have a motion?
Some move.
Have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, Ms. Kate Harper. I think this is for you.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to see you all.
Same here.
I have my congratulations to the Wissahican Fire Company, to Ed and Mark. Thanks a lot. Hopefully, this will be quick. I'm here with David Goldstein, my client, David. We had the resolution approving the Goddard Daycare Center at the Old Pike Restaurant in October. It hasn't yet expired, but it's going to expire in 90 days, and we are still waiting on the official permit from PennDOT and DEP. And so, on the advice of your solicitor, when I said, what are we going to do? We don't get it. He suggested we come and ask for an extension. We asked for another 90 days. I don't know if that's what you're prepared to grant. We're certainly hoping to get started on this as soon as possible, and we're all anxious to see it through to completion, but we're afraid we won't make it by January 11th, I think, is the date or some right in there. So we're just asking for an extension.
90-day extension. Are there any questions from the board?
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for 90 days extension.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
That was easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah. Next up is approval for an employment office offer for an admin assistant. Mr. Manager?
Yes, after two recent retirements in the administrative department, we have an opening for administrative assistant. We'd like to extend that offer out to, to fill up position to Michelle Farzetta, and she will start on January 10th, 2022, and in accordance with the employment letter that you've received in your packet.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the audience? Okay, can I have a motion?
Some move.
Can I have a second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, employment office offer for office assistant. Mr. Manager?
Yes, after the retirement of Joyce Baker in the administrative department, we have extended an offer to Jennifer O'Brien for an office assistant, which will assist both the Park and Recs Department and the Building and Zoning Department. And she will, or she, she has started yesterday. This is just a formality.
Gee, thanks. I'm glad we have a vote. Appreciate it. Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the audience? No? Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank, thank you very much. So now you have two, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up is the Divot two-year contract. Since you're on the board of Divot, Mr. Manager, could you expound?
Yes, Divot is offering, if, if members have a, are agreed to a two-year extension, guaranteed to stay with Divot for two years, they will reduce the premium for 2022 in the amount of $48,305 for the, for the entire township, or for the employees of the township. So I'm asking to sign this addendum to the contract. We signed a similar contract last year for two years, so we are still under agreement for 2022. This will just extend it to 2023, and it will get the reduction in the premium of $48,305.
That's a pretty good deal. Did you twist any arms to get that deal, or they give that to everybody?
They don't give it to everyone, I can say that. But they, they give it to their, their most cherished customers, we'll say.
I like that. I like being cherished. Okay, any questions from members of the board? Any questions from the audience? Can I have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Three new laptops for police vehicles. We have the chief here. Hi, Chief, how are you?
Very well.
Well, you, you can stand up and, and tell us all about these laptops.
I'm just going to turn it over to my backup, because some of the questions I won't be able to answer. But all of our cars require computers.
Right.
All of our records management, all the dispatch, computer rated dispatch, everything runs through computers. Now, we're running e-tickets through computers. We're constantly putting more apps on these. And what we tried to do, how long ago, Mike, were the refurbs this year? Yeah, so there, there are $5,000 units. We tried to piecemeal it in an emergency basis earlier in the year with two refurb units. And the warranty on the refurbs is 90 days, what it lasted about 106. So they made it through the warranty, and that was about it. So we need, we need these computers for the cars to operate. So Mike's here to explain what all they do and the different warranties and the different aspects of what we're going to try and go to is patrol PC.
Right, so how many of these do we have right now?
We have three of the refurbs. None of them are actually functioning right now. We believe one will be functioning. We've kind of made a Frankenstein tough book out of three. That one's functioning, so we're actually down two cars that don't have functioning laptops.
Okay, that's not good. How long do you think it's going to take to get functioning laptops?
Well, with your approval, we can place the order. I don't know with shipping. I would estimate probably three weeks.
Oh, it's not too bad. And they're $5,000 apiece?
Yes, it comes with a three-year warranty. And then this company, who Montgomery Township uses them and some other municipalities, after the three-year warranty's up, they give you an offer to refurb the entire thing, new keyboard, new hardware, and they'll extend the warranty. It is half price to do the refor, but it should last, in theory, for six years or the whole life cycle of a patrol.
Right, 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 right. That's, you know, very expensive. And the computers are not tied into the township network? They're tied into the police network, is that right, only? Right?
With our own server.
Yeah, so you back your own servers up, right?
Yes.
Right, so, so no, no one can get to anything, right? That's why I like to hear.
The car still operate, the same as the car is not function.
Right.
They still run. None of the dispatch services, all the key elements that we use the vehicles for, do not work. Also, yes, we can still get the car and go to call.
Yeah, okay, so were these three computers in the budget?
They were not. We just found out right after the warranty, after the budget was turned in, these all just died on us at the same time.
The county's requiring us to upgrade to Windows, Windows 10 version.
Right.
And the computers, right, they're not capable of that. It's a crash.
Yeah. Yeah, how old are these computers?
12 years.
12 years?
Yeah.
And they still work? Well, we got our money out of them.
Barely, but yes.
Right, so I'm not going to argue with that. 12, 12 years for a computer is pretty darn good. So I don't have any more questions for you. Does members of the board have any questions?
I have a question. Are you requesting two or three? Because I think that the order I see is two.
Two.
I'm not requesting a question, yeah.
Two, we were able to get one of the refurbs working when we stripped the parts out of all three of the computers, so that one is still functioning. And we put it in a car that's not really utilized a lot, but I think that will get us through the year. The other two are for the two frontline vehicles that currently are down with the computers.
But it's still a 12-year-old computer.
It is. I was hoping that we could get a year out of it.
Why don't we just buy three?
Yeah, why don't we just buy three right now?
Well, that works, too.
Sure it does work.
I think that makes more sense.
All right, I'm sure it does work. Yeah, having, having three new ones is preferable. You know, you guys spend your time trying to get something to work that might not. It's, it's like the microphones. I think we can afford another microphone. It's in the budget, Mr. Manager, right? So, yeah, 2022, we can wait a few days to, for the next meeting. And I think it's probably a good idea to get three computers.
But thank you for trying to save us a few bucks.
And it is great, yes, this law.
Oh, yeah.
Very old, tough books.
Panasonic.
Panasonic is what we use to always run. And that was one, it's simple, but now it's become a lot more complicated and more complicated.
Yeah.
Can, can they be wiped and recycled, you know, the parts recycled?
They don't make them anymore. The people at Panasonic, when I asked, they kind of laughed at me. It's just dead technology.
It happens a lot. So do we need to, I, I mean, the, the way that it's added in our report says three, but then when I look at the quote, it says two. So I'm assuming it's going to be the same price?
Yeah, I can't get the quote for the third, but it seems like they break it down per computer.
So I guess the question is, we can just authorize three based upon this price and move forward, may I ask, Mr. Township Manager?
You guys calculate.
Okay, I see.
Mic, please. Microphone, please. Okay, if I did the, the calculations correctly, it's $16,688.46. So if we can approve up to $17,000 for three laptops, we should be able to, to get them.
I'd like to make that motion.
Yeah. Second, all those in favor, say, well, wait a second. Is there any questions from the audience? I keep forgetting about our Zoom audience.
I know there are none.
No? Okay, okay. So we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So you got yourself three new laptops. Penland Woods HVAC authorized authorization to deny the bids. Mr. Manager?
Since we have to buy three laptops for the police department, we're asking to deny all the bids for the HVAC. No, we had, we were going out to upgrade the HVAC equipment down at Penland Woods. It's still working, but we wanted to get ahead of everything. I guess the budget number that, that I had in the budget was $25,000. We had, we went out to bid, we got two bids. One for $79,497, the other one for $167,000. So my $25,000 bid or budget was a little bit overwhelmed. But the, the engineer and different vendors think that this, these numbers are escalated a little bit too much and that we should maybe defer until later and try to redo this project again. Like I said, the HVAC equipment is still working. It's down Penland Woods, which, which is used, you know, a minimal amount of time. So we're going to ask to deny, reject all the bids for this bid, and we'll look at it for next year, possibly.
Okay, so you need to vote for us, so what you're saying?
To deny the bids.
But you, you put the money in the next year's budget already?
We can. Yes, we can, we can move it from this year to next year, yes.
You're going to increase it because $25,000 is not even.
Well, it's funny, it won't be, yeah, we're going to have to get a better number for that. So we'll work on that, and then we can adjust the budget, when the, amend the budget when that number comes in.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the public?
No.
Okay, so I need a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those who are in favor of authorizing a denial for the bids, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you mu, very much. That motion passes. Request for EMS Subcommittee to provide a stipend to the firefighters living in Lower Gwinnett Township. Mr. Brandt?
Yes. I think we have to recognize that the fire, volunteer firefighters are going to us for safety and for them to offer their time 24 hours a day to fight fires. There are municipalities other than Lower Gwinnett that recognize, and these volunteers, and in turn, there are different programs in the state for tax credit if someone owns a property in the municipality. I asked our solicitor, Neil Stein, to take a look at the different options that we have, and I'd like to turn it over to Neil to explain to the supervisors our options.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. As you indicated, the state legislature recognizing that it's difficult to attract volunteers for first responder duty, enacted legislation that provides for both a property tax credit for those who own real estate in the municipality and an earned income tax credit for those folks who pay the earned income tax in any particular municipality. Recognizing that not everybody owns real estate and not everybody pays an earned income tax, some municipalities have started to pay stipends to volunteers and varying amounts, subject to various rules and procedures. This would need to be done by ordinance or resolution to allow for any or all of those three options, a property tax credit, an earned income tax credit, or a stipend.
Thank you, Neil. After considering the three options we have, I'm recommending that the parent board and consider a stipend of $500 for a resident of Lower Gwinnett Township who answers the call of fighting fires either at Wissahican or North Penn fire companies, because there's a shortage of volunteer firemen. There's absolute need for additional men and ladies who want to answer the call 24 hours a day. We're fortunate and blessed in Lower Gwinnett to have both these volunteer fire companies answering the call when there is a fire within the township. There, we have, I'm aware of at least two residents who live in Lower Gwinnett that own property, and in turn, I would be in favor of a stipend, a maximum, I believe, is $500 once a year to all volunteer firefighters that live in Lower Gwinnett Township and set an example for neighboring municipalities to do the same. So that's my request. I would be pleased to have it passed tonight. If my fellow supervisors want to delay this further and keep it on their plate, that would be up to them. But that's my recommendation for a stipend of $500 to all volunteer firemen that live in Lower Gwinnett Township.
Okay, so, so since we don't have a resolution to do this tonight, I'm recommending or suggesting that we vote to instruct staff to pursue a resolution so that in 2022, this can be voted on.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a very worthy effort. Having all volunteer firemen is, for our people in, in our township, is just stunning. We're one of the few in southeastern Pennsylvania that's all volunteer. Everybody else has some level of full-time employees. It's, it's amazing that that hasn't happened already, but whatever we can do to keep our fire service healthy is what we need to do.
Okay.
That's what we need to do. So, so can I have a motion to?
I just have a question.
Oh, sure.
So do we have to give the same benefit to all the resident volunteers, or can they choose which one of the three that they would like to receive?
I don't understand your question. Could you repeat that?
So do we have to give the same benefit to each of our lower Gwinnett volunteers, or can we, can they choose whether they want the tax breaks or the stipend?
It's up to the board in the resolution or ordinance to determine which benefit you want to give.
Have we observed this benefit up until this point? Have, have we observed this benefit up until this point?
No, no.
No. Oh, okay.
So is there, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Is, is there any, well, I guess I want to ask Mr. Brandt, since it's your resolution that you're proposing. Do you have any reasoning to not open it up to let them choose? I have no issue with the stipend, but I don't know if there could be a cost benefit now for somebody to get a tax credit on the property or the earned income.
I don't have.
You have a preference?
I don't have a, a preference. Let's give the volunteer fireman.
The choice.
Choice.
Because they're all in different situations. So one might be better for them than the other.
Exactly. I have no problem with it.
The only question I had was, do we know how many volunteer firemen or women live in Lower Gwinnett that would potentially benefit from this?
North Penn has three. Wissa Hickin told me they have around ten, but they have not given me that list, which is the discussion I had with the chief today, Chief Ledbetter.
No, my only other comment is I want to thank Supervisors Brandt for bringing this to our attention.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
All right, so, so can I have a motion for staff to investigate the right?
I'd like to make that.
Okay, can I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Passes. Next up, thank you, Mr. Brandt, for that. I think it was a very good idea. Next up is public comments for citizens. Any concerns or questions for any items that weren't on the agenda tonight? No hands? Okay, thank you very much. Next up is the managers' report.
Well, this is the last meeting of the year. I did reach out to PSATs. I want to congratulate Mr. Brandt and Mr. Gray for their service here at Lower Gwinnett and helping me throughout the years. I reached out to PSATs for a certificate of service award. Both of them read pretty much the same way, except the name and how many years they served. But certificate of service is hereby presented to Ed Brandt, Mark Gray. In recognition of the years of service as a supervisor of Lower Gwinnett Township, we commend you for your selfish dedication to the community and local government, as well as your leadership commitment and passion for serving your fellow citizens. Presented by Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, December 2021. So Mr. Brandt, I have you at thirty-five years of service altogether. And Mark, I have you at twelve years of service together.
All right.
So I just want to congratulate both of you and and thank you for all the years and all you guys did for me.
That's, that's a blessing. Are you sure? I'm not sure. That's, that's, that's what you wanted.
And in two weeks, on a Tuesday, when you don't have anything to do, you can log in and join us.
Yeah.
I wish you both well and we'll see you around. I know you'll still be stewards of the township when you're walking the township or at a restaurant saying how good the staff is and how great the township is.
And how proud the manager is.
Yeah, right. So best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Supervisors' comments. Mr. Brandt?
Yes, I have some comments here. I want to thank Craig McInally and also Jamie, managers and assistant. Were a job well done and I'm sure they'll continue to do that. And, and I'm sure the the supervisors in 2022 will benefit from their hard work. I want to thank my fellow supervisors, Mark Gray, Danielle Duckett, Kathy Huntsinger, and Tessie McNeely. Thank you for the last two years. And with Kathy, it's longer. And also, Mark, it's been a pleasure working with you and making the township what it is today. I want to thank the staff. Paul, Jim, Chad, Fred, Chuck, Ken, Neil, Wissickin Fire Company, North Penn Fire Company. All the previous supervisors and current members of, and past members of, especially the subcommittee program that started in nineteen ninety-three. And it has proved so valuable to the township's benefits. And the, it uses the talent of so many people in Lower Gwinnett to bring value in many areas, public works and finance and an environment. And I, I just hope the residents realize the volunteers that we have that volunteer their time and talents to this township and don't get the recognition that they deserve. My congratulations to Mike Terstee and Jamie Martin on the election to the Board of Supervisors. I want to thank Mark Gray for his twelve years of serving the township. I want to give it a full credit, as mentioned in my last comments, with the volunteer firemen that live in Lower Gwinnett Township and the board, and I thank them for addressing that. Next to last is a challenge for the 2022 Board of Supervisors. In nineteen eighty-eight, I was chairman of the township and dedicated the building outside in nineteen eighty-eight. And we had a quarter, a ceremony. It was a bitter, bitter day, about five degrees. We had a van from the middle school. We had to move everything inside and and we look at this building and and this building has been outgrown. We have a public works department that's in four different locations. We have a police department that is bulging at the seam and space needed. My, my envision, my vision here, and it's a challenge to the supervisors of 2022, is for Lower Gwinnett Township to work in agreement with Gwinnett Mercy University or the property owners of that property. Or, like our solicitor mentioned, Ed, you can just do a taking of the of eight to ten acres and build behind the giant supermarket, a new public works facility. That would enable the public works department to locate it in one location. It would enable the police department to move in and take over also the area that the public works department is presently in. I think to do that, this township is capable and have the finances to float a bond for about fifteen years to make that happen. I think it, it's a challenge to the new board. It's a challenge to this township to recognize that is totally ridiculous for us to own a property behind this township for the purpose of using the garage for storage for public works. For the public works department to be spread throughout this township. They do not even have a current, the current facility downstairs that does not enable them to meet together in a, in a public, in a lunchroom type area. When there's a snowstorm, they're on call twenty-four seven and they work around the clock. There, there is not proper facility for them for meetings, for even taking a shower, for proper bathroom facilities. This township has to move and do something to address those two departments, the public works and the police department. They've totally outgrown this facility in the back. To have the police cars parked outside twenty-four seven, to not have the proper facilities, to even have the public works equipment to be under one roof. It is my challenge, I'm asking, I'm challenging the 2022 board to seriously make this the number one project for 2022. Work with our solicitor, Mr. Stein, who I, I do hope that the current staff are maintained by the new board. And it's a challenge to them, to the Board of Supervisors for 2022, to take a serious, serious look at this challenge that I'm challenging you to, to do. Because to sit around and just put it aside, nothing's going to happen. You must, you must take the number one priority for 2022 to take a look yourself. Go down to the public works department. Go to the police department and see what they have, where they're just bulging at the seams. This can be done. We're, we'd like to think we're one of the top two municipalities in the county. We have the resources and the financial power to be able to address this. And that is my challenge to the new board. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Rosemary for permitting me the time that I've volunteered and ran as supervisor for thirty-five years and four years on the zoning hearing board. I think Rosemary came to my swearing in in nineteen eighty-seven. And when I think about the time lost with the family or three children. And at, at that age, in the middle eighties, right, we had a a senior going into high school. We had a freshman. We had an elementary school child, and now they're all, they're all grown. But the support that Rosemary has given me in my family will forever I'll be forever grateful for. The remarkable thing about it is it's been over a thousand different meetings that I've been involved with here, Lower Gwinnett. And in particular, the public meetings. Rosemary knew when I walked in that door if it was a successful meeting or not. And she just knew. So Rosemary and I will be married fifty-four years in two weeks. I want to thank you. And again, I thank the current supervisors and I hope the challenge I present to the 2022 Board of Supervisors is taken seriously. And the staff at Lower Gwinnett also, I hope I did. We have a retired secretary that comes here to this meeting tonight, and I'm really touched by that. I really appreciate that. I thank you. That's all I have to say.
I just want to say that we were with you all the whole time. We were happy that you were doing what you wanted to do and the kids grew up. Yeah, knowing everybody and Lower Gwinnett and Bamber through all their sports and movie events. And they learned a lot. So, you know, we were very happy to be here.
Thanks, Rose. Thank you, Rosemary. Cass?
Well, geez, there's nothing to touch my heart than seeing a grown man cry. Thank you to Rosemary for having your husband to Lower Gwinnett for all these years and particularly for my years serving with him, which I think amounts to about a third of your total service.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be sitting here without Mr. Brandt. He tapped me from the Park and Rex Board, put me up here on this dais, and I'm proud to say that I felt like he was his wing lady for many years.
Yeah.
And we've had a lot of fun, a lot of laughs, some challenges. Very few disappointments, thankfully. And I really appreciate your guidance and your patience and your advice, your friendship, your dedication, your sense of humor. It's meant the world to me, Ed.
Thank you, Cass.
And one last idea for that municipal building, that Edward J. Brandt municipal building.
That sounds like a plan. Thank you, Cass. Tessie?
Gosh, um, well, I'd like to thank the two supervisors that are, that are moving on after tonight. I owe a, a great deal of thanks to both of you. Mark, for mentoring us, Danielle and I, as we started, and teaching us about the goings-on and also our administrator. Manager, I'm sorry. So I just want to congratulate both of you. Ed, I think it, it took us so long to get on the same footing on the subcommittees we were on, but I've, I've learned so much from you. I really appreciate all the history and the knowledge you've imparted in your wisdom. I really congratulate you for all the wonderful years of dedication and your family's support. That's very meaningful. And I, I think the, the township will be forever in your debt, grateful to you. And I, I wish you all the best. I, I hope that we will be able to make a reality of the, the building you have suggested. And we'll certainly do our best in the coming years. And, and Mark, I hope that we will see you on the Environmental Committee joining us going forward. And again, I wish you both the very best. And I, as a citizen of Lower Gwinnett, I'm very grateful for your service and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tessie. Danielle?
So I guess echoing what everyone else has said. It was a pleasure serving with you both. Mark, I want to thank you for all of, as Tessie kind of leaned into, all of the knowledge that you shared with us, your willingness to kind of embrace us and, and you know, involve us in the process and give us information that helped us along the way. I appreciate it. You didn't have to do that. You did do that. And I enjoyed every conversation. I enjoyed fi- finding the commonality that we both shared and, you know, going back and forth intellectually of things we didn't agree on. And, and Mr. Brandt, I've known Mr. Brandt basically my whole life. Like I said, since I was five years old, Mr. Brandt enrolled me in the Lower Gwinnett Little League. But he was elected as a supervisor, I think I was eight years old. So I've, I've always known Mr. Brandt. I appreciate the opportunity to serve with you. I think you're an outstanding public servant. And, and your desire to benefit our community is exemplified in all the service that you've provided from Lower Gwinnett Little League all the way up through your service as a supervisor and chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to serve with you both. I know that you will still be here, so I'm I appreciate the opportunity to serve with you both. I know that you will still be here, so I'm not saying goodbye. I'll just see you both around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark, my emotion got the better of me, and I completely overlooked thanking you for the twelve years as supervisor. And what a pleasure most of the time it has been serving with you and the best of luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Well, it's a little bit of a emotional time. We're saying goodbye, but not really. We're going to both be around. Whether some people like it or not, we're still going to be around. So you know, how time flies. My my twelve years at Lower Gwinnett have come and gone in a blink of an eye. It's been a remarkable journey for me. Service to others gives my life meaning. And I hope it does yours as well. As I jump into another great unknown in my life, my biggest worry is for my country and my community. The truth is, I am neither a conservative or a liberal. I'm a moderate. I believe in the love of the family, religion, duty to the country, care for others. I'm an engineer. I like to get things done. But there is a darkness in our country. The seven percent at the extreme edges of our democracy have have infected our culture with division and turmoil. Social media has infected our ethos with blame and victimization. We must guard against the extremes and stand in the middle, or else we will not stand at all. Like most, I have few regrets. Sometimes I should have spoken up and I remained silent. Sometimes I should have done more and I did less. But I met some truly great people in the twelve years that I've been here. And my life is richer for it. And I hope they feel the same. Our new leaders will take it from here, but they will hear from me and Ed, I'm sure, when we think they need to. But we want to wish them good luck. For all my colleagues at the township and the professional staff, thank you for a job well done. And thank you, Ed, for your thirty-five years of service. I just think that's remarkable. It's, it really is. This is an end of an era, but it's the start of a new one. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.